The regular meeting of the City of Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission. It appears that we do not have a quorum and will not be able to vote on any issues until another member arrives. However, there are a number of issues that can be presented and discussed without taking a vote, and so we will start with that. And the first item that we're going to discuss is actually the third item on the agenda, and that is informational meeting regarding improvements to North Manny Avenue from College Street to the entrance of Oakland's Mansion or Oakland's Historic House Museum. And Chris Griffith, City Engineer, will make a presentation. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you very much, Mr. Backlund. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today and discuss the North Manny Avenue project. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to go and see what we consider a very successful first phase of Manny Avenue reconstruction. That project included quite a bit of drainage work with porous pavers and then also a completely new drainage system, also underground utilities. And it truly been a success for us from an engineering standpoint. There used to be a lot of flooding in that area. Actually, had businesses and a local church there that had flooding in the building. And that's been successful in taking care of that problem. So we're anxious to get started with the next phase, which we call the North Manny Avenue project. We're currently in the development phase. We've completed preliminary plans on it. And that project will actually extend from the College Street area on Manny Avenue, the intersection there, just north of that intersection. And will extend up to the Historic Oakland's House and Museum. And we're excited to actually to have a public meeting on that tonight. And we'll be able to present the entire set of plans and several more exhibits to the public, just exactly what we've, at least the preliminary plans that we have for that section. And just briefly, that section will include also, will include moving the utilities underground, getting those out of eyesight. And then also sidewalks on both sides, rebuilding those. Right now, we do have street trees that are planned along the route. We'll do decorative lighting, the black posts. We're still working with, actually with the Oakland's Mansion folks. And we may actually, are we looking at going with what's described as a gas light, which is actually a little bit more indicative of the light that was used back in the late 1800s. So we're looking at some possibilities with it. And then we'll also include on-street parking on one side of the road for the entire length of the project. And once again, that on-street parking will include the porous pavers, which will help us out quite a bit with drainage in the area. I've got just one of our exhibits that we'll have at the meeting today, but you can see the exhibit has got, shows the street trees there in the grass strip area. And it's got the decorative lighting. And then it's also the red area, excuse me, is where the on-street parking will be. So it's a project that we're excited about moving forward with. Obviously, it's an area of town that the city has a lot of pride in. It includes a section of the historic zone just right around the, actually with this phase of it, just right around the College Street area, there's a couple hundred feet of historic zone there. But really excited with giving a signature entrance there to the Oakland's House. The meeting will be from 6:00 to 8:00 tonight at the Oakland's House. And it'll actually be in the museum there in the meeting room, just immediately adjacent to the, yes. And it's right there where the parking is, so I think it should be pretty obvious to everyone. With that, it's really all of my presentation. Well, one thing, may ask, as far as timing, currently, we have not scheduled the funding for the project yet. Still a little early, since we're still in the preliminary plan phase. But we'll certainly be talking about that in the coming months as we further define the plans, when we actually be able to start construction. But really wanted to, before we get too far into the design phase, really wanted to get input from some local groups, met with Oakland's, certainly wanted to meet with the Historic Commission, and then also meeting with Main Street and then the homeowners tonight as well. So just wanting to get some feedback and just seeing what, you know, this is a residential area, wanted to get some feedback as to what their, what a collective vision of this stretch of roadway would be. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions the group may have.
Anybody on the board have questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Could you describe, the drawing that you have is just of a straight stretch. Could you describe how this, the South Manny had some detail related to the intersections and how those were handled for crosswalks and everything. Could you describe how this project compares with the crosswalks and intersections at the South Manny?
Sure. That's a great question. And we actually, I do have that on another board. It will be very similar. We'll include crosswalks. It will actually be the stamped crosswalk, which was used for most of the previous project. We've got one little section there where we actually tried to use pavers as something different, and we've had a little bit of trouble with settlement in that. But we've really had success with a stamped asphalt that is overlaid with a thermoplastic. And it's a little bit more durable and holds up more over time. And then we'll also include, it won't quite be as large, but we'll also include a plaza area at each corner, at each intersection, that will be a stamped concrete. And that'll just give folks a little bit more room when you come to each intersection along the path there.
For the pedestrians, you mean?
Yes.
The plaza, so it would be like at the, where the crosswalks are?
Yes, exactly. Exactly. You'll have your typical handicap ramp, and then you'll have a little plaza stamped concrete on the outside of that.
There are, I believe, some brick sidewalks in there. What are you going to do with those brick sidewalks?
We'd like to, we'd like to give the residents the option of, just like we did in the first phase, the option if they would like to. It's a little bit more expensive to include the, or to rebuild the brick sidewalks. Essentially, what you have to do is build a concrete sidewalk at a lower level and then basically lay the bricks on top of it. And that allows it to actually meet ADA standards, which of course we're required to meet. It's a little more expensive, but we would like to give residents the same option, or at least a couple of different options that we've done in the past. Either hopefully that they would pay for the additional cost to have the bricks relayed at there. That would be our first option. But if they don't want to pay any additional, we would certainly, we would certainly take those up and give the residents the brick, and hopefully they would use that. Seen a lot of people use them as planters, use them as a walk actually into their house. We'd like to see them remain in the area and be reused. But the first option is that we'd like to relay them as sidewalks.
Are the bricks that are shown there for the parking, are those a drainage system there?
It is. It's a-
Same thing as South Manny?
Exactly. It's what we call a permeable concrete paver. And it's been very successful. We've used it in several locations around town in addition to the Manny Avenue project. And it just, it's very successful in controlling drainage. I've seen fire trucks open up their spigot full blast, and they'd be able to absorb the water. So we're excited about their use.
What are the tree types that are anticipated? I hope they're not like the trees around the Court Square that would drop those black seed pods overnight, it seemed, and they were just an incredible mess for the city.
It's actually a, and I remembered the name right until you asked me, it's actually a kind of a hornbeam. It's an upright tree that, it helps us, it works really well for us with any sight distance problems when we get to the intersections. And then, of course, it's also a very narrow tree. It works for us. Right now, we've only got a four-foot grass strip in that area in order so we could not have to take any more right-of-way. And with that four-foot grass strip, we're really limited on the, you're almost looking at either the hornbeam or a, almost maybe even, I'd rather not go this route, but almost a single-stem crepe myrtle type thing. But I personally think the hornbeams look quite a bit better and would rather go that route.
And it has a small leaf so that when it falls, it won't get into the city storm sewer and create clogs.
Exactly.
So that's really quite good. Have you considered bicycle lanes? I know in Nashville, whenever they can, they're putting in bicycle lanes. Did you all study putting one on Manny?
We love bicycle lanes, and we build them with a lot of projects throughout the city. Unfortunately, with this, we just felt like that it was going to be too big of an impact. The houses are relatively close to the roadway. And then if we, because we don't have, we just got the, you know, just the, just the on-street parking is really, and the two lanes, one lane in each direction. We didn't have anything for a center turn lane, which is one of our typical sections, so we had to drop that also. But not wanting to really make a, you know, a big impact on the residents and eating up a lot of their front yard, we decided not to go with the bicycles. But actually, doing the sidewalks on both sides and encouraging certainly pedestrian traffic, we'd love to see a steady stream of pedestrians going back and forth from the Oakland's back to the Discovery Center. And then taking advantage of, you know, the commercial that's already on the other side of the South Manny area, and hopefully additional commercial to come.
What is the type of concrete sidewalk? Is it like a broom-finished, natural sort of concrete? It's not exposed aggregate?
It's not. The sidewalk that we've used is just a broom finish, and then we'll, we actually, to add color to it, the stamped, the stamped, or the stamped concrete kind of looks like a brick, and it's kind of a reddish color. We actually use those at the pedestrian crossings.
Okay. And could you say how wide the sidewalks will be? And I'm assuming sidewalks on each side of the street, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. And there'll be a standard five-foot-wide sidewalk, really found, again, just trying to manage space, but, you know, consider, you know, we might consider going down to a four-foot to try to get more of a grass strip there. But again, trying to encourage pedestrian traffic, I'd like to stay with the five-foot and use the hornbeam to get the street trees in.
Of course, I live right around the corner, and I'm on that sidewalk all the time, and I prefer the wider sidewalks.
Sure.
They're more comfortable to walk on. So I would even, you know, I'm on Lidl, and across the street sidewalks, I think they're six feet, and my side is four, or maybe it's five, I don't know, but I prefer the wider.
I do also. Five foot's a, it's a good width with the, you know, if you have a steady stream of traffic, especially going back and forth, opposing each other, walking, sometimes we may go up to six, and even to an eight-foot if it's a real heavy traffic. But we feel like that five would be a good option here.
Linda, did you have something you were going to ask?
A couple things, Chris.
Yeah, Linda.
Back to the trees, the plants. I know you've been up and down Manny enough to know that we have a lot of varied architecture on Manny.
Yes, absolutely.
On Manny. And I hope you won't be, have tunnel vision about these trees. I hope that there can be some variation. I don't see any reason on earth for there to be the same tree all the way down Manny. I think that was, I think that was something that's been kind of an eyesore to some people that I've talked about on the South Manny end. Are those, I'm sorry, I don't recall the name of that tree.
The European hornbeam?
Yes, hornbeam. Is it, there's no variation? And that's the only thing that's not varied in those neighborhoods, because the architecture is so different. And I would hope that you won't stick with one plant type.
That's a, that's a good point. And I'll certainly, I'll speak with Cynthia about that.
Okay.
See if there's some variation that we can, of course, as I mentioned, we're a little limited, just because we typically like to have a six-foot grass strip in there and just can't, just can't get it all in, honestly, with the on-street parking. I'm curious to see what the residents' feel is about the on-street parking, whether they like it or not. It's one of, that's one of the things that I'll be anxious to hear back. It does serve us a purpose in that allows us to put the pavers in, which are very helpful to us from a drainage standpoint. But that was one of the things that, when you got, we got up into the College Street area and into the Main Street area, we got into the residential area there. It wasn't 100% that they were, you know, most of the commercial was all for the on-street parking because it gave people a place to park. But when we got into the residential, it wasn't 100% that folks liked that. So I'll be, I'll be curious as to, we're following the Manny Avenue neighborhood study that was completed back in, what, 2002, 2003, Robert? So that's our, that's our initial blueprint. But that's certainly something that's open for discussion from, you know, hear back from you guys and then from the residents tonight also.
Okay. And Chris, I had one other thing I'd like you to make a note of is when, at the intersections where there are all the, not brick pavers, but the stamps, I'm sure you, I'm sure you've learned a lesson in what you did on the South Manny, but I'm at, I'm at College and Manny, and there was a lot of settling.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's like going over speed bumps at that intersection. So I hope the contractor will be more aware of what is going to happen and what needs to be done before those are laid.
We will. It's really, and to be fair to the contractor and the manufacturer, they questioned whether or not that was a good application for their, for those pavers. It's something we wanted to try, just because it, it gives you the feel of going over a, you know, the older crosswalks where you actually have the little rumble and kind of reminds you of it. But they have settled, and I wish I could tell you why they've settled, because we put those in exactly the way we put in all the other stuff that hadn't settled. But we're going to repair those, and we're going to go back to the, to the actual thermoplastic crosswork where you stamp it into it and then lay the thermoplastic over it. And that's just held up really well over time, the other ones. It keeps its color. If you go and look at some of the stuff on Middle Tennessee Boulevard and some of the other ones, it lost, it's lost its color pretty quickly. But we tried something a little bit different with this thermoplastic, and it's really held its color and its shape a lot better. But yes, we're, and we are going to repair that at College. It'll chatter your teeth whenever you go.
Mayor, may I, you have any questions or comments? I've got a couple for you, Chris. The meeting tonight, open house format, is that how it's set up?
Yes, it's just open-
Just wander in and wander out?
Yes, absolutely. You can show up anywhere from 6:00 to 8:00, and show up at 7:59, and we'll still be there and be glad to show you the plans.
And then you mentioned that you're in the preliminary planning phase, and, but the design is yet to come, is that correct?
We have, we've actually have a preliminary design. We've surveyed it and laid out a design, but it's really, it's very preliminary and want to do that on purpose, because I want to get feedback from, I know, working with Linda on the first phase of the project, it was very helpful in some of the ideals that she gave me then, and looking forward to getting some additional ideals on this phase.
So some of the design details are, can be modified?
Oh, yeah.
And so I would agree with Linda on the tree types. And of course, you know, I'm going to argue for native species, as I do at every meeting. But that's one thing. And then I wonder if you have taken into account the zoning changes that may occur in that neighborhood and how that will affect the changing uses of all those old medical buildings, how that might affect the use of the street and the neighborhood and the quality of the neighborhood?
We've stuck pretty closely with the, I think, I'm sorry, I don't remember the date, 2003.
That early plan for Manny, but recognizing at that time, I think that the hospital would move. Was that, were we aware of it then or not? I can't remember.
I believe at that point, because we had started Medical Center Parkway, and so I thought, I think there was some thought to that. That's a good point to give. I mean, it's certainly, we certainly have some capability there to make changes.
Because there could be a lot more possibly, I mean, commercial, small commercial, shop, restaurant, coffee shop type use, which does require on-street parking, I mean.
Yes, exactly. Which would lend itself more to actually what we've got laid out, which is the on-street parking. And, you know, we've got that little jog there at Lidl Street that we battle with also. And we've got, and so we, Hudson Steel came up with a really good design there, swapping the on-street parking to make that transition there very gradual. And if, but again, it's kind of, it's kind of based on having on-street parking and being able to meander through there. And it really, the best thing about it, we do have to take, we'll have to purchase some right-of-way at the corner there, but nothing significant. It'll be very minor.
And then one other question, of course, I'm interested in bike lanes as well. It looks like maybe the street's not wide enough. I know on the south end, there's on-street parking on both sides. Is the street narrower north or is it?
It is. It is. Once it gets into the residential area, it does, it does narrow down, especially to try to, if you'll remember, on the, on the South Manny project, we actually, the street trees were actually raised islands within the parking area. So we didn't try to, we didn't try to do the street trees, not until we got up into College Street and into the residential area. We didn't try to do the street trees actually in the grass strip there. So it, so in order to get the, in order to get the width, we eliminated the grass strip and actually brought the trees into the parking area, if you will. And that's something we could look at with this phase, doing the raised, we've just, honestly, we've really struggled with the maintenance of the, of the pavers in that area because of, because you get the leaves falling right onto the, you know, onto the brick pavers and then trying to get the street sweepers in there. And you've got so many bump outs, it really, it really becomes very busy from a, you know, from a visual standpoint and from a maintenance standpoint.
Okay. And then I guess my last question, and I asked Robert this too, the Manny Avenue is in the, is its own National Registered District. And I know that our commission, of course, is over the Main Street Historic District and not Manny Avenue necessarily, but I would just wonder if it would be worth getting some advice from the Tennessee Historical Commission on how, you know, how this might affect that National Register nomination? That is, you know, if we alter the street so much that it no longer fits into that category, I don't know that it would.
That's a good question.
Jim's thinking that it's mainly, has to do with the structures, the houses, but, you know, with National Registered Properties, when you make an addition, generally, you try to make it look as though it is an addition, and so that's fine. So for example, you may or may not choose a particular light style or a tree style or whatever-
That's a good point.
-in a National Registered District. And I was wondering also, I guess, are you going to, you know, stretch out the sidewalks down Lidl Street or any of the other side streets?
Well, we certainly have the opportunity for connection. We always look, always looking to make connections with sidewalks, absolutely. And especially looking at the, at the end, right there before you get to the mansion or to the house there, the Roberts Street. I'd love to take those sidewalks on over to Highland at that point. So always looking to make sidewalk connections if we can. And then, of course, you know, with, with Lidl Street, you know, we have the larger plan, which will eventually widen Lidl Street and have bike lanes all the way from Broad Street all the way over to, well, I guess to-
College to the university?
Yeah, exactly.
Middle Tennessee Boulevard, that would be nice, yeah.
It's a, you know, we'll do that piece by piece, but that's, you'll see the first phases of that coming shortly with the, with the new roundabout at Broad Street and then going over to the new Judicial Building.
Okay.
I do have two quick questions.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned Manny Avenue and Lidl, that intersection. Will that ever be, it's just curiosity, will that be a four-way stop? Or is Lidl always going to be that thoroughfare? I mean, do you have it planned for a four-way stop? No?
My feeling is it would always be a, Lidl Street would always continue through there. If nothing else, it kind of helps us out with a little bit of speed control. Manny Avenue's such a straight shot, and Lidl Street's pretty straight through there also.
It helps me out with, you know.
But it's kind of been from necessity, and I think we're, you know, we're taking the jog out of it quite a bit from the Manny Avenue side, but there'll still be enough in there that certainly Manny will, will still need to be, will still stay as a, I don't think we'd ever swap from Manny being the thru street. but there'll still be enough in there that certainly Manny will, will still need to be, will still stay as a, uh, I don't think we'd ever swap from Manny being the through street to, to, to Lidle.
One, one thought, and you have another question too?
What's the distance from the Discovery, um, House to approximately to Oakland? I wondered, you know.
I don't know. I can, I can certainly find out and get that information, but I apologize, I should know.
Well.
Uh, one, one other mention on that, just that intersection, there are quite a few accidents at the intersection. Maybe a sign on the, below the stop sign that said cross-traffic does not stop would be helpful. Cause I do see that in some locations.
It's a very dangerous.
And other, other places you see all, uh, you know, four-way stop. So if, if there was just that little, uh, addendum sign below, that might make a difference.
Sure. We've had to do that several times, uh, up and down Manny, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you, have you done a traffic study of that intersection? I think it's a very dangerous intersection.
I, I have not, uh, but, uh, we, we can, uh, I can certainly talk to.
Well, I think the police department could tell you how many accidents are.
They do. They, uh, they certainly keep traffic reports on, uh, on, uh, on accidents. So we, I can ask Mr. Balachandra to, uh, to do that.
Any other comments on the proposed Manny Avenue plan? It sounds like it'll be a great improvement for the city.
Yes.
Uh, this is, uh, you know, you said it was a preliminary phase of it. Will there be final plans, uh, brought up to, uh, for public consideration or for public hearing or for public view or something like that?
We would hope that, uh, basically, uh, you know, take everybody's feedback from, uh, um, from the, from these meetings. And don't necessarily know that we necessarily have another public meeting for, uh, for those, but we certainly could go back to, uh, you know, some commissions and boards and just kind of show them what the, uh, what the final outcome of the, uh, of the project is or of the design.
Any further? If not, uh, thank you, Chris. That's.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate, appreciate you giving me the time to discuss.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. So we'll move on to agenda item and under new business, which, which one are we gonna?
Nobody else is gonna come.
Well, there's nobody else is gonna come. So I would say that we can discuss the first one and give them our thoughts.
The five twenty-two East College Street requesting to replace the exterior wood clavbered with hardy board and paint the same color as the existing house.
Uh, and I'll just begin by saying this, this property is located on the south side of East College Street, about midway between, uh, North Highland and North University Street. Excuse me. Uh, the house was built circa nineteen ten in the Colonial's revival style of architecture with a hip roof, uh, a dormer, clapboard with a porch with columns, classical doorway with lights and it's two stories. It is a contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. Uh, again, the applicant, Mr. Abbott, uh, would like to replace the, the wooden clapboard, uh, due to a lot of weathering and, uh, the exterior covering on all four sides of the house with, with, uh, hardy board. Uh, and the style would be in the same current wooden clapboard style, the overlap and everything. Uh, and let me see if I can get to some photographs up here. So I can show everybody in viewing audience.
Here we go.
Okay, if we could show the screen, here we go. Uh, you can see that, uh, it's a, it's a yellow house with, uh, with wooden clapboard. Uh, and they would like to just replace all of it, uh, on all four sides, uh, with, with the hardy plank. Uh, I know that we've done some houses and some accents, accessory, uh, with some trim with hardy plank. So, and that's what he's proposing to do. So, um, your feedback, uh, I mean, right now we can't vote on anything, but your ideas, uh, how you feel about it.
Have we done any whole houses in hardy plank or whole additions?
I think so.
I don't recall. I do know that we don't.
We've done a whole house in small parts.
We don't govern color, so that's not a concern for us. Um.
But we do a lot of trim and, and things with the excess, with, uh, with hardy plank.
How about on the little leave at the Beaver Street?
Cherry Lane.
Cherry Lane, did we not do a, an addition or a big addition on a house that was all hardy plank? I don't recall.
Yes.
Yeah. It, was it?
Yes, and it is hardy plank on the new addition.
Yeah.
In the.
Oh, that's right.
Okay. Uh, so that's sort of our history, but again, we would not be able to take a vote on that, uh, today. Uh, unless we could, you know, perhaps schedule a special meeting.
Special meeting, uh.
Sooner than our regularly scheduled meeting. I don't know what's the length of time that it has to be advertised.
Uh, we can get, if we can get it in the newspaper and next week, uh, there's a holiday week, so I don't know that we can do it then. We may be able to do it the first week of, uh, of December, if all possible. And if that's, we'll just have to poll the commission members, uh, in order to have a special meeting and, and, uh, see.
I had a couple of questions, if you don't mind, just so, I think it would be good to have them now instead of waiting to this next meeting, so if there are any changes that occur. Uh, you noticed that it, uh, you, uh, mentioned, Robert, that the weather would be the same, so it's the same exposure. So if it's a five inch, you'll have a five inch exposure, is that correct? It's the same amount of distance?
Yes, it's gonna be.
And then you're, is this just the yellow clavbered or are you also gonna get the corner boards, the window trim, the, is it?
The corner boards and the window trim and all of that will stay the same. We will be, um, repairing around the windows and the doors and, and trim. Uh, some of that trim has become rotted, uh, and, and that areas will be replaced, but it's not an overall replacement of, of everything, the exterior with, with clapboard on that, as far as that's concerned.
Where, then you're talking about the window frames and potentially being rotted or whatever and replacement. I can appreciate that. Will that be then the hardy plank type material as well, the cement board?
Uh, around the windows themselves, no.
It'll be wood.
It, it'd be wood. I mean, and here's the thing, I don't believe the windows are completely gone. I'm hoping that by replacing the clapboard with the hardy board now, uh, and, and weathering or, uh, treating the windows and sealing them, uh, around where the, uh, hardy board replaces around the windows, that, uh, that should preserve them for some time.
Yeah. So really, is the yellow siding is gonna be replaced? That's really it? Is it gonna be a different material than what it is now? That's my point.
Yes, that's, that's all will be, will be the, the, the hardy board on the, replacing the clapboard siding.
And then in our packet, it shows, uh, two photographs of a, a piece of siding that's been broken or whatever. And it appears to have a texture. Are you wanting, it comes basically in smooth or textured? Are you wanting the textured?
Uh, actually, I believe we're going to go with the smooth, uh, hardy board. Uh, is, is, but that was just a piece of the hardy board that we were trying to figure out the, uh, the sizes of the hardy board.
Okay. Well, to that point is we're actually, uh, part of our packet is to review the markups to our proceed, our guidelines. And we had talked about that it would be the smooth and this is the texture, so that's why I'm bringing it up. We have made a practice of making it smooth. If that was the original design intent, that it stays smooth, even though you're changing the material. If we could demonstrate that it was an old material, that was rough, then we would approve that. But typically in our new guideline edits, we are asking for the smooth, so I would encourage you to do the smooth in that. That's really all, only questions I had, just, and I thought it would be beneficial in case there was any differences that you came prepared for our next call meeting.
Well, there is gonna be, uh, just, just a few minutes ago, my wife started writing down that there may be a change to the paint that we just received an email from a company that, uh, a show out in, what, Texas. Uh, but we're looking at maybe, uh, changing the paint scheme. We've seen a house that was that. So the, the paint may be changing. We'll have, provide, I will provide the planning commission with that.
We, we do not review paint colors, so you're, you're good to go.
You can make it.
But it's not gonna be blue, is it?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. It's not. It's, uh.
Tobismol pink or, you know, something like that.
No, nothing, nothing. It's very, it's actually a very pretty, uh, paint.
All right. So again, we'll, we can't vote on it today, but if possible, we'll try to schedule a special meeting and, and get a quorum here so that we can vote on it as soon as possible. If not, our next regularly scheduled meeting would be the.
See December.
Third.
It's the third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday of December, but, uh, I, it sounds like we're, we're willing to try to, is that correct? Are you all okay about it?
I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, and my, my question is, I mean, I'm sure you would like to get going. You probably have a contractor who's sitting there waiting, chomping at the bit to have, you know, yeah, who, who wants to get some money from you to pay for his Christmas for his kids probably. And so I would like that we have a call meeting to benefit you, if that is a benefit. What I'm hearing, I think that it is. And so we apologize, certainly we apologize that we don't have a quorum here to, to, today to give you that answer. But we have our procedures that we have to follow. We, we sincerely apologize. But, um, I think we ought to have a call meeting and not wait, so you can get going. You're, we're in the rainy season and you need to get your building secured.
And I, I will poll the, uh, commission members and, uh, the first Tuesday of December is the second.
Yeah.
And I got your package here already submitted, so all, all I have to do is contact the newspaper, get, uh, five to show up. And, uh, and I'll probably even talk to them about that.
Okay, okay. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah. So the, uh, the next item is one fifteen North Highland and I guess the same, the same discussion would probably apply to that, uh, without the, we can't vote on it, but, uh, we can talk about it briefly if.
Well, they're not here to ask for a vote. They're here to get just direction.
Okay, just advice anyway. Oh, we, we can give advice all day.
Yeah, we're, we're glad to do that.
We're happily under contract though, pending our appraisal and inspection, which is happening, um, a week from yesterday. So, super excited to be back in historical zoning since I grew up there and my parents still live there. I have appreciation for this. Very excited.
So do you want to talk about the project that you're proposing?
Sure, sure. Um, the house was built in nineteen thirty-five. I know, I think Robert has a, a few pictures. It's a two-story home. The, the bottom floor is brick and the second story is the, uh, stucco Tudor style. And there is zero storage space at all, outdoor storage space at all, even for just a push lawnmower. So what we, um, have talked to city planning about is if we could put a, a long, narrow carriage house in the far back right corner of the, of course, you know, depending on property lines and all that, right straight back through the driveway, or you can see back there. And, um, to match the original home and, and keeping the same, the same feel and, and appreciation of the home. But the materials, we're also interested in doing the hardy board that's the stucco style. I've used it before on, on another home with the, you know, simply we're concerned about rot, you know, to do just the solid wood structure that's gonna sit out in the rain and, you know. So just kind of here for guidance. We know that, um, we probably will be closing in January, sometime mid-January-ish, late January. And just to kind of go ahead and have your all's feedback now of what we can expect when we turn in for approval from you so that we can get going, cause, um, we will be owning a home with no outdoor storage.
When we discussed this, she came into the office and she brought in the drawings that are shown on, on the monitor here. Uh, one of the things she was talking about was, uh, was, uh, garage doors. And she mentioned that she would like to have it where it would be mechanical and it would come up, uh, instead of opening out. That would be her first choice. Uh, and that's something that we can look at and think about. Also, the, the carriage house itself, the size that she was talking about will fit back on this, uh, let's see if I have this lot here.
It's a strange lot shape.
It is.
It's a very strange lot.
Okay.
Not quite sure where everybody's stuff is. Actually, we're interested that their surveyors coming soon, so.
All right, you can see the drawing.
We might not make good neighbors on a room.
Uh, here is, is, this is Highland Avenue up here and the house being here with the first exit and the carriage house will be on this back lot. Yeah.
And that's way not to scale. I do have to, from the, the, where it makes the jut out, it's sixty-six feet on back to our back fence. So it's much longer, the little odd.
Yeah.
I can show you a better picture of it right here. You can see this back, this little appendage here is where the carriage house was in. And it will, depending on the size, it, it will, it'll meet the setbacks, uh, so I don't think there'll be any requirement for a variance. Uh, so what she's looking at is, is the front facing, uh, North Highland. Uh, I don't think the size would probably ever be seen. It would be mostly just, uh, just the front entrance into that carriage house.
And we've looked at, uh, other, I, I remember on Main Street, uh, I can't call the name, but they did, built a carriage house in the pool, uh, right near, right near Tennessee Boulevard, that's where Second Avenue runs into, uh.
I've taken that several times.
Yeah, and they put that type of garage, or that appearing, that garage door type on it. Uh, I'm not sure if they open up or sideways, but it looks a lot like this picture as I remember. And, uh, one suggestion I would make, if you want to do some reading, is, uh, go online and just look up National Register Bulletin. And, uh, for, what, what was the title of that particular one, Jim, do you know? Renovating an Old House or, you know?
They have like thirty-five different preservation briefs that you can look at.
This is the actual bulletin.
Separate bulletins too. So there's, there's lots of that material out there I couldn't do.
Yeah, but just look up National Register Bulletin online and they, they talk about how do you, uh, when you have a historic building or a house and you want to make changes or additions to it, how to do that to make it compatible yet distinct. And that, that's one thing that, uh, you might find helpful.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I think our tendency is to try to match the existing house and that's great. And, but typically, actually, the National Register prefers that you make it distinctly somewhat different, but complimentary.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
But it seems to go against the nature. In fact, we have done some additions to houses and they, they match exactly. And, and we got them passed, but, uh, but the bulletins actually want you to make them for the, for the typical person walking the street to actually identify that's not original.
Oh, okay.
So, cause you, otherwise people have the sense, oh, well, this is all historic when it's really not.
Right. Okay, that makes sense. Can I ask you then, on that note, um, are you looking at the front of, you have that? Okay, um, the front porch of the house has an arch and so I was repeating the arch and the garage door. And it also has a stucco detailed triangle on the house. I mean, literally I was very much trying to repeat the shapes. And is this too literal in your opinion?
I don't think so. I think you're using different materials and I don't know, what would you say, Jim?
Well, I, you know, I think, I find that we typically do approve designs that try to match exactly. And I don't, I personally, I know it goes against what they want you to do, but I kind of like that look in a way. But usually it's the materials, the paint colors and what have you, proportions and all that. The fact that you're doing a one-car garage is actually more period correct than having a big two-car garage. But, I mean, uh, for instance, you talk about it being stucco. I wondered what that triangle was and I couldn't tell from the photographs. And if you were to make it, for instance, a vent to ventilate that space, that would make it different, but you could do it still triangular instead of doing it stucco.
Okay, okay.
I did question some of the other things that I had. It was like, well, the, the shingles will match the existing shingles of the house. So are those an architectural shingle? That looks like a wood shingle, wood shakes or shingles?
They're act, they're architectural, they're, um, and it actually is getting a new roof, but it's gonna be the same color as the original. But it's, it's actually red. The roof of the house is red, so we're just gonna roof it with the same asphalt, architectural red as the house.
Because the shingle you used to see back in the, what, fifties and sixties was what they would call a three-tab and it lays very flat, almost like it's metal. But the architectural shingle, which looks like wood shingles, is the sort of common vogue that everybody loves right now. Gives you a little more meat up there on the roof and that kind of thing. It's a nice look, but sometimes when it's meant to look like wood shingles, other than some houses like, that house would never have had wood shingles, but everybody tends to like it. And it's in a, it's a resource material you have to replace periodically, so they sort of look the other way.
Wonderful.
So you want to set a, a sectional door that goes up, like in four panels, that goes up on tracks?
Ideally for ease and also for, you know, rotting issues at the bottom, you know, it's gonna be exposed and.
If you have a flat ceiling in there, like the bottom quarter of a truss or something, you need at least eighteen inches to have that curve go up. So where you show the, uh, bearing point of the rafters being nine feet in your door, looks like it's about the same height. You don't have enough height there.
Okay, thank you.
So your door needs, the typical door is nine feet wide, seven feet tall, but you can get them taller after that. But you need about eighteen inches for the doors to make the curve to go to the ceiling.
Okay, thank you. That's, we're my contractor will definitely, these are my crude.
No, I think you did a great job.
Graph paper drawing. Well, thank you.
I think you did a great job. Uh, you'll have gutters and downspouts, I'm sure, there.
Yes, sir.
Uh, well, you have, your, is the house, it appears to have enclosed overhangs. You don't have the exposed rep roof. the exposed roof rafter tail, it's all boxed in underneath?
Yes, it is.
So you'll have that same effect on this?
The soffit, yes, yes, okay.
And then on your sides, you show what I presume is the long sides, you show what I believe to be then the stucco material, like two windows and a pair of doors.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I would recommend to you that you put a bottom trim board of the hardy plank, at the bottom is a skirt, because if you look on the photographs of your house where it transitions and the gable ends from the stucco to the brick, there's a horizontal board.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
And I think you really need that to transition to the ground there.
Okay.
Will this be a concrete slab engraved in?
Yeah, that was our plan.
You'll need to use pressure-treated wood on the bottom seal plates for rot and this kind of thing, but I would encourage you definitely, it's required by code, but I would encourage you to.
Okay, our contractor has worked on homes on Lidl before and he's familiar with our list of things we're going to do, so hopefully he'll know to do that, if not, we've been given these new contracts, right.
Look for it, yeah, as if it's pressure-treated. I think, I think the design is just fine and it's so far back there, I mean, actually, if you, if you just pushed it just right and we couldn't see it from the right of way, we wouldn't have had the ability to even review it.
Oh, we could plant some trees in front of it.
No, we're not, we're not, we can see it.
What kind of, let's see, as long as they're not Bradford pears and blow over in five years.
Or hackberries.
Robert and I had also talked about the light fixtures on the front, I don't know if that's, I mean, we're just going to go with traditional period in black, I mean, nothing crazy, shiny silver or?
Our guidelines, you know, we talk about lighting, I would recommend to you that you send photographs or bring samples of the materials, the shingles, the hardy plank, the photograph of the lights you intend to use so that we can review it for your final approval.
Okay, all right, wonderful, well, this will be a huge help and expedite things when hopefully this is all sent.
I did have one question that wasn't clear to me from your, from your drawings, so will the entire garage, exterior of the garage be hardy plank that looks like stucco or will there be some brick on it as well?
We have no plans to put brick on it, my concern is because I don't know if I can find brick that would even come close to matching, but then maybe that's what, they don't want us to match.
Doesn't happen, doesn't happen.
And we could paint the brick too, so I don't, I don't, I wasn't planning on using bricks, simply because-
Okay, well, that was just, I was just curious.
While looking at the house, I really haven't seen new houses with brick like that, I think I'd have a very difficult time, and I know there's none at the house from the original build unfortunately.
Okay.
There was one thing I wanted to talk about, the zoning regulations that we have to work with for that particular zone, it says in there that as far as the bulk regulations that the lot can exceed 25% of the lot coverage with structures, I know you're going to take down that old building behind the house, the little-
It, the building, the actual building belongs to the house on Main Street.
Oh, okay, so that's not part of your lot?
That's not, it's in the jut out.
Okay, but at the same point, when you add this carriage house with your house that's on, you know, the main house?
Yes.
It can exceed 25% of the lot total, you might want to just check to see how big your house is, just the footprint, not the second floor, it's just the footprint itself.
Okay.
So you get the footprint of the house plus the carriage house and it can exceed 25% of the lot coverage, I know this lot's a little bit strange and it's hard to get a good look at it, but it might be a little close, just look at it, I think it'll, I think it'll work.
Okay, and, yes, there are no, no structures, that structure is a carport that belongs to the house on Main Street that's actually, it looks like it's in our backyard, but it's not, but then the current owner, I think, had asked if he could build a two-car garage right behind the house and was denied the ability to do that, and so there is this temporary aluminum-
That's the one I was talking about.
Is that the one you're talking, okay, yeah, we have no intention of keeping that, it's not even connected to the, to the ground in any way, but if we were to do later on a carport that would be simply like four columns with a roof, is that considered, it's a roof structure, so that would take?
Yeah, it's got a roof to it, yeah.
Okay.
Anything where the roof has applies to that 25%.
Okay, so I'll need to just keep that in mind, there's a walnut tree above that where they dropped their walnuts, so I know exactly why he was wanting that aluminum or any kind of roof there, so, okay, thank you very much.
So whenever you get your plans ready, just, we'll talk about it and get you on the next available agenda.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you Ms. Light. Thanks for helping improve the neighborhood.
Oh, thanks, we're really important.
I walk by that house regularly and I've been hoping that you would buy that.
We're thrilled. Well, we'll see, you find a spot or goes on the-
One last thing on the agenda, and I think it's probably something that we're going to have postponed to act on until the next meeting.
We can.
We propose amendments to the rules of procedure.
Yeah, yeah, since we can't vote on it, we'd better just wait until we get them.
Well, that'll give us all a chance to read them.
I would, I would add that I was more vocal the last time we reviewed this about certain little tweaks and I think everything on there looks just fine.
Oh, it's good, it's good, well, let's vote.
I just know that I was very vocal about the small little edits and I think everything looks just fine.
That was good.
So we'll look forward to-
But we're talking about the second of December, Tuesday the second?
As a possibility.
That's what we're going to work for, is special meeting, and whatever we decide to put on that meeting, we'll put in the agenda and we'll advertise for that.
All right.
So we'll put this on, we'll advertise for that and the house on College Street.
And then I'll just mention one more time, every month, I guess I'll mention it, that people who have an interest in commenting on Murfreesboro Long Range Plan 2035, you can do so online and certainly historic preservation and historic districts are something that we're interested in, and so if you have an interest in that or in bike lanes or traffic, whatever, it's a great opportunity to participate in your city's future.
Okay.
Thanks. Do we need a motion to adjourn, I guess we can't even vote on adjourn?
We're not even needed today.
I guess we're going to have to stay.
Bring in some people.
Meeting's over, thank you.